Need to get started. Welcome everyone to the Floyd County Board of Education Board of Staff meeting. It's actually a special call meeting on June 14, 2019 at 6:30 PM at Prestonford High School. You might as well not be asleep or... Would you like to do a roll call to show that all school board members are present?
Yeah.
Thank you. Could you hear your comments there? The Floyd County Board of Education goals are to be a five-star school district, to have a college degree rate of 90%, to remain physical and solvent and efficient, to have an ACT score of 19.5, to have a K grad average of 82, and attendance to be 96%. I'd like to take a few seconds as a reminder for why we are here. Thank you. And if there's anybody that wishes to address the board, I'd like to remind you that there is a clipboard to sign up on. And next is the announcement of the agenda. Mr. Atkins. I think it's a special call meeting, so the agenda is as it is. Nothing can be added. Next is spotlight on student status and community achievements. Amy, do you have anything this evening?
We don't.
The next would be report on student work at Prestonford High School principal and staff based council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've had an exciting year and made a few changes at Prestonford this year. And so we'll quickly go through some of our demographics and our results from previous years. There is our total enrollment, our attendance rate, again, not quite at the goal, our through reduced lunch rate, and our special needs population, along with some others there, Mr. Allen's included. Some of our achievements, the reading achievement, we had the high schools in reading brought up 6.3 points. Our ACT also averaged 19.1, which was the highest that we've had. Highest EOC was in Alfred II, our CCR rate 97.4, and then also our graduation rate of 97.4. Several different events for community involvement. We had an open house at the start of the year. We had a lot of colleges, this was the first time that we invited colleges and PIA to come and also meet with our students. Our participation in PBI, we had a couple of different speakers here from Kent Nathaniel. This was the first year also that we had a career day that was very successful. You can see that in the top right corner. And that was Mr. Thacker's for bringing that to our school. It was a wonderful day. Freshen orientation, our students also in trying to build more bridges to our community organizations are at BLA in Animal Shelter Drive. We also had Highlands come in and conduct an health fair. We have the e-CAMI manufacturing tour that our students were able to go participate in. Our community emergency management training where our students also help volunteer at Highlands for emergency drills there. We've also been very focused this year on our student mental health, and so we have adopted our the sources of strength program to address some of those issues. And so we're going to continue with that again this year. Unite came in and put together a program for our students to go through as truth and consequences, and they would randomly select a sheet of paper that said that, you know, maybe they had been caught with drugs in their locker or something like that, there are various scenarios, and so then they had to deal with the consequences of all those. And then we had three blood drops this year, and blood drops are a great way for us to get, again, the community in, and then also it allows us to have scholarship opportunities for students. Some of the initiatives in the 365 project, and I think that's one that Anna Shepherd has really pushed, and so our students have been very involved in that. The ARI mini-grants, again, those are through K-Bet. Our librarian, Jamie Adams, has been very involved with the Steel Reese Foundation. And the reason you don't see bookshelves in here with a lot of books is because she was able to secure, I believe it's over $20,000 in ebooks from that foundation to help with our students, our AR program, and our reading in the high schools. Mr. Allen has been very involved in the PBI's implementation, and then we also do have been heavy with the Star reading so that we can measure our students' reading and the grade level they're reading on, and then also the AR.
Some of our career pathways, we're offering administrative support, financial services, allied help, information technology, and of course our ATC programs, which do a great job up there with automotive, welding, carpentry, electrical, HVAC, et cetera. ACT, we've got big smart testing, we use torch bread, data analysis. Some of our achievements by our students this year. Soccer was regional champions, it's girls soccer. Football district champions, archery, regional champions. I think, you said they were undefeated seven years in a row in archery. It's an amazing accomplishment, a coach holiday. Skills USA, we have a state champion in Mackenzie Wyman, CPR first aid. We had governor scholars, William Joseph Hagan, Paige Mester, and this year we had what?
Four.
Four? Four more governor scholars, so we doubled our output there. We have ARI, the grand recipient, Travis Crum, who's deceased, but he was, he'd be missed. He was a valuable part of our high school program. We Hysman winner, Tyler Martin. All A's scholarship winner, Paige Mester. Continuing on some accomplishments, Kyle Rogers at Champions, I think this was the third year in a row for that. Big Sandy Allen winners, Isabella Jacobs, Chandler Nelson, Lydia Wright. Ethan Barney was District Football Player of the Year, District Bay. John Watson's coaching here at District Bay. We had all District courses, Isabella Jacobs, Caleb Birch, Jamie Horn, Emily Webb, Megan Bitt. SDLP was a state qualifier, science and MFP had state qualifier, they had top team finishes in state. Cheerleaders were regional champions. Dance cans were KDCO state champions, Jazz and Teen, they were regional champions, grand champions. We had Golf Player of the Year, Mason Compton, and Track State winner and Long Jump, Drake Mountain.
Any questions? That's a lot of accomplishments.
Awesome, yeah, okay.
I have a question about the sources of strength. Since y'all have been doing it, is it something that you have kind of shared with the other high schools? Do you know if they're doing it since you've already got a program started?
We've had a couple meetings, and in the last meeting they were selecting the project that they wanted to begin the year with. Our teachers have been trained, our students have been trained, but I don't know that it is something that the other schools have been involved with. It is something that I think Angela Duncan, the last couple months, was interested in, and she was doing some research on it, and she was wanting to take that to the other high schools. Mental health is a big deal in high schools now. We've had two graduates, they graduated the last couple of years, who have committed suicide this year. You know, we had a lot of emotional things going on here, the passing of the teacher, and conversations with students, they just really had a difficult time processing that. And so any way that we can help them find coping skills, I know that Mr. Allen, Mr. Thacker, both whenever we talk with students, even with discipline issues, it's always looking at, kind of find ways for them to deal with their frustration, their anger, coping with situations at home that, you know, they didn't bring those feelings and emotions into the school. So we're hoping that sources of strength will help with that. It's about building peer mentors and helping teachers be able to help students.
I'll turn the mic down here on that, thank you.
Ms. Springer, report in. I have a question. That 19.1, was that this year's ACT score?
No, it was last year's.
That's okay. I just, I wanted to make sure, I haven't had a chance to see it all.
I have two questions.
All of these, so all of these were last year's.
Okay, it's last year's, got it.
Can you say something about 365 books?
All right, so that was Anna Shepherd's, I think that's something she was really interested in, making sure that every young person out there, if they did not have someone to read a book to them at night, which a lot of kids do not have that, they could get on YouTube or go to the website, the district website, and they would be able to select a book, and it would be our students reading that book to them. And so one of the things that Ms. Janes, our library media center specialist, said, she went to the Floyd County Library because we don't have a lot of books for preschool age children, and so she was able to bring those back here. And several of our students, whatever club or sport they participated in, and then they had on that uniform or that outfit, and then they read aloud that book while it was recorded, and then those were edited and screened so that they could be uploaded for students.
Is that part of the same program where they had to write to the editors and they had to...
Yes, it is.
...company to make sure that they have permission to do that?
Yes, it is.
Was Floyd Central above that also?
All three high schools.
All three high schools, yeah.
My second question. You like him because he didn't be, just tell me about, she was getting big. About Kobe, she offered her own hand.
All right, so our allied health instructors, Emma Watson, has been very successful this year. She's brought a lot of enthusiasm back to the program, and so we have a lot of students signing up for that. One of the things that she also was able to offer to our students, and we get this through summer school, is a phlebotomy course. And with the phlebotomy course, at the end of the summer school program, the students will take a test. But in order to even be able to do that, they have to complete so many sticks, and they're not actually drawing blood, but they have to be able to hit the vein, and you have to be able to see the blood, I guess, pop back into this tube or something. So daily we offer our arms so that our students can meet the stick requirement. And we, that's why we're in long sleeves. Some of the students are better at it than the other students, so there's some bruising, but it's all for a good cause, and we're happy to do that.
And I love you, lady. You're so good.
I do want to come in real quick. We went through the transition radius meeting the other day, and the career pathways are often, and your counselor is so involved with that. I really like what you're doing with your career pathways.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a big part of the future, and even though there are a lot of parts, maybe part of the accountability system that we're not sure of, that's something that we do know, that's kind of the more we offer, and it's just the right thing that we've got to have more opportunities for students. Thank you all for your support and all of that.
Any other questions? Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, I still need some part for the library meeting, and the funding we're going to provide.
Community comments and Board of Education, there's only one person for the sound up, and that's Angela Coleman, there's the end.
First of all, new FCA officers for this year, or myself, of course, the president, Franklin. Patricia Atwood, vice president, Cheryl Bentley, secretary, George Martin, Treacher, so the same officers as last year. And thank you for your support, as always. We had our first new service project for the year. We brainstormed whichever name we want to go with, and we decided summer food. We were worried about students over summer, June and July, so we did a summer food drive, and yesterday we divided it down to the three attendance areas, so those deliveries should be made yesterday, today, or tomorrow, but should be dispersed in the three attendance areas. And that is it. Remember the member signs, and Luthy Dickers are available at KEA office, as well as other Luthy Dickers of Education, Luthy Dickers of KEA office. And in our next meeting, it's next Wednesday, the time change is at 11:00 AM. In summertime, we do typically meet earlier in the night instead of 4:30, so everyone's welcome, and I look forward to seeing you at a meeting and sitting down and working in, talking about ways to communicate, as always, as I, FCA's number one goal, student communication. You guys have a great summer.
Thank you.
Miss Coleman, I hope you're planning on being at the next one, but it's lucky you've got my calendar. You found my birthday, you found three days of my life scheduled for vacation. I will be at a meeting.
Okay.
She's very, don't be, I won't be next Wednesday. As a former PCEA president, I understand the role and how important it is.
You know, I'm here for...
Absolutely. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any students that wish to address the board? Parents, PTA, PTO, staff based council, classified employees, certified employees, FCA, Principals Association, members of the Board of Education? And any other person in the public that I missed?
I would like to say real quick, I had an opportunity to attend six of our graduations, and they were awesome. They were amazing, self, students led, student focused, just above and beyond what you would expect to see at graduation. I got to attend two high schools, I was at Betsy Lane in New Jam and Floyd Central to this school. I'll give a few next year, Ms. Merrick, and I promise, you're the first stop next year. And I attended four middle schools, and again, they were all student-led, student-oriented. We were celebrating the success of our students, and then that's what we were. So had taught the school year ended very nicely. I came in with a month left, the busiest time of the year, things went very smoothly, the transition's been really good, and we're starting, started yesterday, actually planning for next year. Just a little one thing on my part.
Actually, I do have something that I want to explain to get on record. There has been some comments that we, as a board, had got together to discuss the budget without being in need. I want to set that straight, as the fact that these packets are given to us a week in advance, and that during that week, we individually, if we had any questions by ourselves, we contact Matt Wyerman, or the superintendent, and speak to them alone. No one else present, just us over the phone or with them in front of us, not together as a group. So when it is said that we discuss things before the meeting, it's not as a group. It's individually with the superintendent or whoever the director is that we have a question. So I just wanted to get that on record and ask to get that straight as to how that works. Next, we have Board, Action or Special Reports, preceding attendance and planned enrollment in Health Aid Service. Are there any questions regarding Coreak?
Well, it didn't, you know, last, we had like 2010, now we have like 90%. Then we go 91, 92, and last three years, we were almost 90%. So last year, we dropped. It's not only we dropped the student attendance, at the same time, we were teacher attendance also reduced. Certain schools, we were 80% teacher attendance, the case sometimes like 95%, but not the teachers. And then, continuing with that, I was leading for the salary, the class 6Z, the substitute. If teacher not there, we give a substitute. But our salary for substitute is so low, so I feel bad about that. How can you get a good substitute teacher? If they come, sometimes they don't have any work, but as soon as they find some work, they won't go to teach in the school, because they start sometime minimum wage. I did go, I completed 12 pages, because this is really, really interesting when I went, but they start at minimum wage, at six hour substitute. So we don't get a substitute teacher. And when teacher attendance will be 80%, you need a teacher. So I have no idea what we're going to do, but attendance, we need to do something. If kids don't come to school, they're not going to do it. They're not going to get any food because we have so many kids, very poor, sometimes they don't even get to meet them. And then, our parents really like music teacher, art teacher, but if you have poor attendance, you don't have money enough to hire a teacher for the music. So me, I don't know how we're going to handle. When I became school board member in 2001, what I did, I asked every church I did go, and asked teacher, I said, whatever you put in today, that's wonderful, but just put it one time, please send your kids to school. And then I told every parent, your neighbor, if you want music teacher, tell your neighbor to send their kids to school. Your neighbor can't go to school if you want a music teacher, because your daughter ain't have a teacher, you don't have enough money. So I think we need to do about that. And then the third thing, I was giving that TSP, and this is July 15th, so one county, one district, if independent, so they have, they visit every, every kid home, like we have 65, 100 kids, or 660, they visit every home before the school starts. That's one district, so I don't know how many kids there are, but they visit every home before the school starts. So I don't know if they start there, I have no idea what we, we really need to do something that will deliver better.
I agree with you, Dr. Chandler, we can't, we can't teach them if they're not on the seats. I agree with what you're saying. We've actually gotten the GARA grant, and we have college and career navigators, or what they're called, they will, they will help with attendance as well, they will focus on attendance. And we've got a couple of other things, that's, that's some of the things we've already been talking about, trying to get in place for the fall, for our students. And again, I'd like to address what you're talking about with our staff. There are things that we, we need to look at, and we can do to even, you know, incent us for our staff, and I know it shouldn't be our students, and it is, but, you know, there are things we can do, and we'll certainly be looking at that this summer.
But, you know, now there's a new rule, your sick leave cannot be a regular retirement. It's the state decide, or district can decide?
That's a state decision. Yes. Yes, that was, that was part of the retirement decision. And basically what they said, after this year, you won't be able to be paid for those towards your retirement. What you had until now is what we'll acquire, is they'll pay you a third of it, and then we'll go towards retirement. After this year, it doesn't accumulate that way anymore. You still get them, but you don't get to use them towards your retirement.
Right, right. So if you feel that, if you don't use it, you don't get any money. So someday if a project in my house, with one day access in the school, because it's very human nature.
If you take the day, you get full pay for the day. If you wait for the sick day, you get a third of it. Take it at the end when you retire. So that, that kind of addresses as well with teacher attendance, I think they're worried about losing their days, and that's, you know, that's the way things are set up in government, it's hard to deal with sometimes.
Any other questions regarding Coreak?
Yes. Do we know yet how close we were to meeting our attendance goal this year?
Ms. Springer, I just saw her again. I'm not sure exactly where we finished, we're, we're somewhere in the neighborhood.
94, 21.
I was gonna say, it's just shy of 95, isn't it?
94...
21.
21.
That's about where we were three years ago, and then we came back from last, so we're...
Our board was 96.
96.
Our board was like this at 96.
Yeah, it's 96.
So we can do a little bit.
Yeah.
1.79.
It's not far off. We're going to push to be there next week.
Any other questions? I need a motion to approve Coreak.
Let me.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Next is 4B, receive athletic academic attendance report. Any questions regarding the athletic report?
I know we had a long discussion yesterday in the athletic handbook meeting regarding the tardies and athletics, and I think that's going to be looked at a lot of our district as of coming year.
That's certainly, we have policies in place that needs to be followed. We put policies in place to be mindful of our students and what's best for our students to be a part of those policies.
I need a motion to approve 4B. Dr. Chandler makes a motion, I need a second. Junior, any opposed? Motion pass. Next is 5A, receive report of the superintendent. Mr. Atkins, do you have anything to add?
No, I think I pretty well jumped in where I shouldn't have, I guess, except about my own mind on stage.
All right. I need a motion to approve 5A. Junior makes a motion. Dr. Chandler makes a second.
I do have a report attached, correct?
Yes, you do. It is a motion. Any opposed? Motion pass. Next is 5B, receive utility report of Prestonford High School. Any questions? I need a motion to approve 5B. Linda makes a motion, I need a second. Second, Dr. Chandler, any opposed? Motion pass. 5C, receive construction manager architect progress report. I guess...
I'll, I'll give you what I know.
Okay.
Obviously, if any special problem, we may not have known by then, as they still have their construction meeting next, another 25th, that Monday of the 25th.
The day that we were supposed to...
Yes. We end up, we had an opportunity to have our, our graduations. It's a beautiful facility up there. It was hot. It was hot. Thank them for the big fan that they had, but it's, it's still the process, they did that so we could have our graduation, and everybody was, received that very well, but it was hot, I'll say that. And Eddie, Eddie the construction manager, I can't remember his last name, but he was on, he was there that day, and he was, he was, he was on hand, he was doing what he could, and he actually had everything going, I mean, turned the fan up as high as it could. So it eventually cooled down some, but it's a beautiful facility. We don't have all the hallways completed, I think we had a few leaks the day it rained so hard, maybe Monday, and they were in there, pictures, marking up where the, where the leaks were at. So that's where we're at with that, as far as construction projects, that's the only one we have going right now.
So did they have the administrative offices part image?
No, it's not completed yet.
So we only have the certificate of occupation from the general. And will they be starting on phase two once the offices are completed, or will they start on phase two before that's done?
I think they'll...
I guess we, let's get that, since we definitely have an official construction manager report, I guess we'll have to table that. I need a motion to table to receive the construction manager report.
I'll make a motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Second is junior, any opposed? Motion pass. Next is action 5 consent. I already have marked that Dr. Chandler wants 6G, I, K, P, R, and Z to discuss. Is there anybody else that needs anything pulled in order to discuss? Is there anybody else that needs anything pulled in order to discuss? All right, so then I guess the next would be six G. Consider a pre-metarum of agreement between Mount Montfort Care Center and Floyd County Board of Education for the provision of therapeutic rehabilitation services known as the SIGHTS program for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Dr. Chandler, what is your concern?
Right, uh, the program is not...
Just getting closer to your target.
I think not, okay, in a second. Uh, the program is very good program. Uh, there is only two schools, uh, the Bestinland High School, and Southwood School, a big school. But they not coming to that school. So it gives, means, and it says, it just be just for the kids for the school. You know, for like psychology. They will come like mountain company and say, yeah. Uh, they provide the therapeutic services to school. Why there is a Bestinland School in Southwood, there are no power to the rest of them. So if the kids, their school need the services, we transport kids to the school?
Yes, to the SIGHS programs, yes, those, that is a district-wide program. And students, students are, uh, they are referred, referred to that based on your possible needs.
But they, like, see, they come to school, Bestinland Elementary and Southwood, they don't come to the school. And they are, Southwood School is like, what, seven hundred fifty-six or more?
Yes, it's huge, seven, almost seven sixty. Um, but they still have that opportunity then to refer their students to the SIGH program, SIGH program.
They, 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 they don't come to the school. So for this school, they come to the school.
Yeah.
For this two schools, they don't come.
They may, they may have a counselor, but they don't have the SIGHS program. The SIGHS program is a classroom. These students attend this class all day, they're in this classroom all day.
So why the two schools, they don't?
Fundy. Fundy, I would think, I can't, I can't answer that.
Who's, who's the director? Oh, it's your mom, huh? Okay. But it is district-wide, so if there's any other kids identified...
Those students are...
So if there's any other children identified, that means that program, that can be transferred to the school.
Yep.
Does that answer your question, Dr. Chandler?
There are buses around there.
Okay. Next is, I consider approve the agreement between seventh learning program for Floyd County Schools to continue partnership for the eighteen nineteen school year. What is your concern on that, Dr. Chandler?
The program, you know, I think that the program, the community, it is wonderful program. Why is there only two schools covered? Why not other schools? Uh, like two schools, uh, some, twelve, ten, uh, middle school, uh, and it is other schools.
Yeah, it is, it's the principals.
Like, we only two school cover the middle school.
We actually have three, uh, I don't know, one, two...
We only do this one, but they're there, there's only two schools.
Mr. Hallard is, is moving forward with the program as well. He just, I don't know what role he played in it last year, but he has made the decision to move forward. That is, that, that's a principal decision and an S B D M decision.
This, this current program is really wonderful program.
It is, it's very rigorous.
See, I didn't make the seminar at the, at the community. It is wonderful program, which is completely free. So why not other schools, other schools not asking for that?
I think it's relatively new to us, and we're still, we're, we're, we're still kind of building it out from what I can get. We, we discussed it yesterday in our, in our principal meeting, and that, everyone's kind of wanting to see how it's working. And see if there's any concerns and how smooth it's moving.
The program is really, really good program. What I, I just learned, just my left and right question.
Ms. Ms. Lawrenceberry is actually, she's at, she's looking at Floyd Central to expand her, she's, she wanted to expand her...
Next is K, consider a free breed to achieve assurance statement for the two thousand eighteen nineteen for the following schools, Ketchikan Elementary, May Valley Elementary, Safeway Elementary, Crestonburg Elementary. What questions do you have there?
Okay, our second question, I will give. All the elementary, you know, the three grant program for the community. Uh, there are all the elementary school cover except elementary. Why elementary not cover the community?
I asked that question today, I told you I'd find the answer. It goes back again to our free and reduced lunch numbers. There's a certain number that if they have less than, they can apply for this program.
No, 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 any elementary has, uh, Crystal Elementary has lower free and reduced lunch. Another elementary has more free and reduced lunch. They have ninety-five point five for the free. And Crystal Elementary has seventy-five or eighty. So any elementary, then higher number of free and reduced lunch?
It, it's, uh, I think, it's a grant, each school in the state had opportunity to apply for the grant, and so they selected some...
Same question I have, because six years back, same thing happened. Every school applied the grant. So any, any elementary did not apply, and I asked the question. There's somebody who write application, suddenly the leave office, something happened, and you see, you all know that. And they say, uh, I don't know, they have no idea, they did not apply for thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, youth grant. And then we started application to the central office. So the central office applied, why they did not apply for elementary?
Well, this was each school had to apply. See, two years ago, all, all of our elementary schools had this grant. And then the state selects, who's this, who's having it?
He's, he's...
They cannot, no, why didn't they go apply?
I think we all applied for this one.
Why?
And I think, I think all schools applied because we did have it. But the state selects, they went through the process, and so they picked for this two-year binding. So at the end of this, next year, I think we all have the opportunity to reapply, or to apply if you don't have the grant.
Any elementary applied, but they did not apply exactly, because see...
Well, that's, it's, it was given a case.
No, no, all the, we simply give out the monies, and with the governor, he uses a lot of money. And thirty-five thousand dollars is a big number.
Oh, yeah.
So all elementary schools, all elementary schools go to grant, except elementary.
Right.
So either the application was not right, why, why the one school did not get it?
Well, they just had the selection process, you know, like through grants. We don't know, because they just sent two...
Why some of the application, the one school did not get it, application, there is something wrong with the application. I need to know what happened.
I can't answer that.
Because evidently it was a state selection. They may not, they may not give the county a reason as to why they didn't get the grant.
Exactly, but because that's not the right answer. Because...
Well, and they not need the right answer, but it may be the only answer that is out there.
So if you know what this is, why elementary school go receive the grant, why not one? Why, and save someone in the future, but they don't get it? So either the application was exactly the right, there is something wrong, because one school did not get it.
Well, Danny will check that the people who get the grant...
I'll try to check right now.
I need to know what...
He will check and give you answers to why Allen Elementary was not bringing the grant. Both schools were applying.
Stumbo?
Yeah, Stumbo, I know, they're reading. Yeah, Stumbo didn't get it either, that's right, Stumbo's not on there.
And Doug's not on?
Yeah, Doug isn't on there either. So Allen's not the only ones.
There's three out.
There's three that didn't get the grants. Doug didn't get it, Allen didn't get it, and Stumbo didn't get it.
No, Stumbo get it, all the school got it, except, except elementary. All the high school, Bestinland, Bestinland...
Bestinland Elementary, May Valley, Safeway, and Crestonburg. That's it.
That's all the body.
Right, Bestinland, May Valley, Safeway, and Crestonburg. Those are the schools that got it.
There's another, there's another program called, uh, what's this one, striving readers? For reading routine, there's another, striving readers is what Stumbo actually got.
Yeah, Stumbo did not get this grant.
It, it's a, it's an almost six hundred thousand dollar grant, striving readers.
But I guess Stumbo wasn't in.
On, on K, read... On K, the schools that got it was Bestinland Elementary, May Valley Elementary, Safeway Elementary, and Crestonburg Elementary.
The five school got it.
There's four schools, listen...
No, I know it, it was a five school.
Read on K, this is six K. Six K. Do you have the agenda of grant?
Yeah.
Okay, six K, read it, it's right there. Bestinland, May Valley, Safeway, and Crestonburg. For this grant, read to achieve assurance statements.
So what is the case, separate in the program?
Yes.
Yeah, they have a separate in the program.
This is read to achieve, that striving readers. We're, we're still in the process of that, of locking everything down.
So not all elementary schools, Floyd County got it, except Allen. There is others. That, that can get it, and Stumbo can get it.
But let's just get something to me, so I won't worry.
I just, I, I texted the president just now to answer why.
And sometimes, correct me if I'm wrong, when grants are given, those schools that apply that did not get them, do not get an explanation as to why they do not get the grant. They just don't get the grant.
Or there was something maybe not, not in line with their application.
Right, okay. Next is six P, consider a purchase of Upslope Professional Services for two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. What questions do you have there?
Thank you.
Oh, I think it's a wonderful Upslope. Mr. Atkins, if you'd like to explain about Upslope, Upslope this...
I will, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was still waiting for more questions. Um, Upslope is a program, um, it is actually for our employees. And it goes back to ensuring that our employees are treated fair and equitable across the county, across our district. Uh, that way, we have a teacher that's tardy or late to work two times over here at Crestonburg. They're going to be treated the same way they are at Allen, if they're late two times. This will actually give you, our administrators will be trained, and there's will be a session that you guys can be trained as well. He offered to, to do that in the afternoon if you wanted to. Uh, he'll train us for the program, train you, I'll rate him trained. Uh, I saw it back in February. Basically what it does, it, they, they write a code of conduct for us based on our board policy, based on K S R, which is our, our state, our statutes. Can I say K S R? K R S. K, uh, K S R is basketball, it's K R S.
And then from that, you just spend less money buying that, something, and you just sell more money.
Turnip leaves, yeah, cuts way back on turnip leaves. Because it does, it mandates that our administrators, they document. Uh, so like you said, there'll be documentation, and it just ensures everybody's free and fair and equitable across the county, across the district, and, and that we are... It, it even eliminates some of the tough conversations that our administrators have to have.
While, while...
Yes, if they're not comfortable with that. Uh, there's, there, you know, like, an option or two. Recommendation as to, if this happens the second time, then this is what happens. So it, it kind of makes sure that we, we're following our policies, and we are following our discipline, our employee behavior handles, our code conduct. Which is what, they, they'll, they'll write that for us as well. And we'll all be trained, uh, I think it's the second, third, or person second, of all this.
And it links our policies to statutes?
When you pull up that, that, that staff member, and you type in that behavior, it links the policy that was avoided, that was broken. And the K R S that addresses it as well, if there's a federal issue, also the federal laws that's, that addresses that.
Will there be an orientation for the teachers?
There will be. Yeah, they'll have a chance to look at the code of conduct. This is used by, Davis County's used it, Madison County used it, there are several districts, larger districts, who use it. Uh, when, when you get up to where we're at, like eleven hundred employees, uh, it, it, it's hard to, to be fair and equitable to everybody, because somebody may let something slide. And we know there's a human factor too. But if you're late three days in a row that week, it's, it's not a human factor, it's because you're not taking it seriously enough to work. And if you leave your kids unsupervised, you know, that, that can only happen once. And if something bad happens while you're gone, who is responsible? I am in the school district. So when we start looking at, at unsupervised children, it's, that's when you see the, I guess, the tally marks really start to, to increase rapidly when it's something that's dangerous, children or, or bad kids. But it, it's a great program. I've, uh, I've sat through the training all three days, and it's a really good program.
Dr. Chandler, do you have any other questions, second?
Yeah, okay. No, definitely.
Not on that one, the next would be you. You want to queue also?
Definitely queue. I just want you to know what is exactly the math, baseball, I would... Queue, for test of M A P math, then you want to...
Yes, that math testing is called, it, it stands for measuring academic products. And what that does, it's an adaptive test. And when a student sits down to take that, the more questions you add, add, answer correctly, the harder they get. So then when you miss one, it backs you back down. So it's, it's giving a, an accurate account of your knowledge of that subject. And you can even drill down after that, we give it three times a year. We give it, as soon as we get it to school, we give it at Christmas, and we give it in the spring. You have to monitor growth, as to what the students have done with it. You can even drill down to an individual student's, uh, math score. And you see if, on their August test, if they were struggling in, in fractions, then you look in December and see if they've drawn any in fractions. So you can, I mean, you can look at each individual part of, of that math test to see how they're performing on. Uh, and we use it as benchmarks, as far as this lets us know, and it correlates K prep scores and A C T scores. You'll look at your seventh and eighth grade, uh, math scores, you'll see that they're all run in close alignment to your junior and senior A C T scores. So it's a really good measuring, uh, tool that we use. We used it for six, seven years of pipe camp. I think here they've only, this is like the second year they've used it. Because they used I think, I think before, and then they eliminated that program. We've got some growing pains with it. Uh, we're still learning how to use everything, but, uh, it's a really good program.
Wonder if you can add them on a visiting elementary, I was trying to make sure what exactly...
And it, it, I mean, it really gives you the opportunity to look at your data. You can really drill down, and you can see if, if compound sentences or those kinds of, whatever it is you need, you can see what you're working on. And then you can restructure your instruction for what they need, for every individual student of them. And Summit does that as well. But Summit's more of a curriculum, whereas this is a, a, a measuring device. Summit's a curriculum.
Okay, next is R, that you have a question about, consider a pre-metarum of understanding between the Kentucky Higher Education Systems Authority, Kentucky Campus Compact, and Floyd County Schools, Woods and Rasp. What questions do you have with that one? No question with that one? All right. Next was Z, consider approve fiscal year two thousand nineteen certified one hundred and eighty-seven day schedule, administrative extra service, extended day schedule, corporate or athletic extra services schedule, certified substitute schedule, tutor schedule, and classified salary schedule. What questions you have there?
Yeah, I have some comment on that. Because one hundred and twenty, it's very hard to live, I feel like a problem. Uh, I have a couple of concern about the salary. I, I think we're giving very low salary. Like the cook, uh, listening here, uh, helping. Helping take work is so hard in the school. Complete the position, I understand, but the taking care of the special medikit is very hard work. And we start, we giving them only seven hours, less than seven hours, and we started at nine point nine. So to me, it looks like we have to in, increase the salary if we can do the three hours. That's my opinion.
Mr. Wireman and I discussed that today. Matt, you still here?
Yes, he's...
What is that, we're, we're looking at, we call it the desk audit, uh...
If, if we're going to look at salaries cables, we got a, a broad range of different ones on the lower end that we'd want to look at. And, and, and what we would need to do is to, uh, review each position, it's called a desktop review. You look at the job descriptions, and you look at what the market pays. Uh, in the past, when we've done that, we've been at or above what market's done. But it's been several years.
I was going to ask, how...
Yeah, it's been several years since we've done that. Uh, but what we've done primarily back then was extend the longevity out, so that people got rewarded for staying around longer. And, and that's typically, because when I came here in nineteen ninety-eight, this classified salary schedules, once you got five years in, you got no more step increases. You stayed here twenty years, you got paid the same as the person that got here five years. So what we've done is there is longevity increases in there. The problem that we'll have with the starting pay, and, and I've done some brief reviews on this back when they were talking about moving minimum wage up to ten bucks. That would push a shift through our entire... That would push a shift through our entire salary schedules. And, and when we start doing that, we got to start looking at, it doesn't just cost $10 an hour. And when we are matching every dollar with about 35 cents to 40 cents, it costs a dollar forty for every dollar that we add to a salary schedule. So I agree, they're low, but we have a finite amount of money. We have a set number of positions. I would love to be able to bring those things up, but it takes money.
But the work is so hard.
I agree 100%. I absolutely agree. But again, when you got a finite amount of money and you got a job, it has to be done. I, I don't know where we go. The food service one, we could possibly do because food service has been doing okay. It's a separate fund. But what about the other people in similar positions that are working just as hard? And just because the funding source is not as viable, do we discriminate?
Could you do a report on that for us next month to, to see what it would be to bring this up to?
I, I could, yeah, I can, I can run a couple of scenarios for you. That's no problem.
And then give it to us next month and let us look at it to see exactly what it, what it would cost us and what we could do.
You just want to do that on, on all classified or just on certain ones or how, what are you going to look at? Because the more you look at, the more time it may take.
Let's do.
Can you make the eight dollars into like 6.7 dollars?
Do I now?
The eight dollars, they're equal to like six and a half dollars.
Right. And that's based upon, food service workers are four, six, and seven and a half. And that's based upon formulas that comes from the Department of Education. They, they, they have formulas in place that determines the number of hours needed, labor hours are needed to prepare X number of meals. So when we do that, we have to try to stay in line with the number of hours that have, that our labor studies is what it's called.
They're actually federal guidelines.
That's right. There's federal and state guidelines because that's a federally funded program. So we've got to keep those in line too. And that's where you get with the four-hour cooks, the six-hour cooks, and, and the number of days that they work. It's, it's, it's pretty intensive if you start getting into those kind of things. All of them?
Dr. Tanner, do you want?
Do you want to set a threshold? Does, anything that's under the proposed minimum wage level?
Do the main part.
What do I?
I have a, I take a, the custodian. You just started like eight dollars, eighty cents. But they're after one year, they work, they get to be one cent raise. See, eight for eighty is fifty-four, we give first year. Some of them give you eight for eighty-nine, thirty-one, and they work only seven and a half.
I have to look at, I'm not sure what you're talking about. But typically our, our salary schedules are, are spanned over X number of years and.
Even one month they work, they get better raise next year than the other in the school year.
That's the part I just want to look at, is all classified, the bottom one to 10 years, one to nine years.
Right. And that's again, if we start bringing some of them up, we may have people that's in the 11 to, or let's see, it's six to nine, 10 to 14. In that 10 to 14 year range, that may just be making barely over 10 hours an hour. And if we start bringing the other ones up, then we got to shift them up accordingly. And that's when your costs start going out the road.
Yeah, that's when you.
And so, you see, teacher only getting raised after 20 years.
They stop at 20.
No, no, no. For custodian, they get only 10 years. They don't get any raise after 10 years. So you're difference of classified and such. Here, right here, after 10 years, they get 9.62, they continue for next nine years, 9.8.
No, classified is goes six to nine, 10 to 14, 15 to 19, and over 20. And that's, that's, that's pretty standard, except some of the bus driver ones, we couldn't change. And that's been the same salary schedule, Dr. Van Der Barry, that we've had for the last 20 years.
We don't have a 10 policy for the classified and such.
The great, the, the longevity spans, like I said earlier, were, were, when I came here in 1998, they stopped in five years for classified. Certified went to 20. We've now, over the, over time moved another one for certified up to 25 years and over. Classified, the last time we adjusted it, we stopped at 20. If you all want to push that up for longevity, we can do that too. That's not a lot of people because typically classified workers are about 20, is about it. We don't have a lot of those that really, that last to retirement. I mean, it's just a fact.
Well, they have a district policy for the state.
That's what, that's individual to each district.
District, right? What do you think we should change it? Because they're not get any raise after 10 years.
Yes, they do. That's what Matt was saying.
They go all the way through their step increases, all the way up through. It depends on what one you're looking at because we had the grandfather-son schedules in, okay? Because of, some folks were making more than what the proposed new schedule said. So we had to keep them at their pay without reducing them while other schedules caught up to it. And with COLAs and those kind of things over the last several years, it's kind of hard for them to catch up sometimes. What we gave you is every single salary schedule that we have on our system. Some of those, there is not even positions on it, but we still have them on our system. When I run the report, I don't hope it can choose from the send it, y'all. I sound off.
So under the individual questions you have, you may need to sit down with Matt so he can tell you whether they're still on.
Yeah.
If, why they're on the system.
I think when we, when you're session, I think we need to discuss about that. Because it is very, very thick custodian, they keep the whole, every building clean, and we don't pay enough.
You want to disagree there? So Matt's going to run the report.
I think we need to do something about that.
Well, Matt's going to run the report and we'll look at it next month.
I don't know.
I asked Ms. Crowder about Allen, and she says, we did, but we did not receive it. She said, we helped people write the grant that got it. Even funnier, some people came along and made us a model RTI school, but we couldn't get the rid of the, the RTI. So she doesn't know why. She says they even helped other schools write it that did get it. So that's, they probably had to use about the same model to get it and they just didn't get it.
So see, the state doesn't necessarily tell you why you don't get it. They just pick and choose.
Just get it.
It's the state. All right. Does anybody have any other things? Then I need a motion to approve six A through six BD. Junior made a motion. I need a second. Dr. Tanner makes a second. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion passed. Jonathan, do we need an executive session? No executive session? Then I need a motion to adjourn. Dr. Tanner makes a motion. I need a second. Second is junior. Any opposed? Motion is adjourned.